Please stand, call the meeting to order for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Vicky, we didn't have anyone signed up. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of March 2nd, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those minutes are approved. On to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The agenda is approved. There were no new conflicts of interest presented. We'll move on to consent agenda, items seven A through D. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. I have the reports that present. First, we'll have the counseling services report.
Good afternoon, President Mickelson and members of the board. My name is Vicky McMillan. I'm here to just do some brief discussion today about the counseling services out at Southeast Tech Medical Institute. So I have a slideshow here, just a little bit about myself. So I have a bachelor's degree in allied health, and I did alcohol and drug abuse studies, and it went on to do educational psychology and counseling. Certifications I have are national certified counselor. I'm also a licensed professional counselor in the state of South Dakota, as well as a licensed addictions counselor in the state of South Dakota, and I am a board certified telemental health counselor. I have a couple additional certifications. I'm a certified mental health integrative medicine provider. Big title for somebody who's got the ability to do nutritional counseling for health and wellness. I'm also a certified clinical anxiety treatment professional. And here at the end of this month, I will be going through an LBGTQ youth cultural competency course. So this is my 18th year out of Southeast Tech, so I'm just today going to be talking a little bit about our numbers this year, 21, 22. So starting July 1st through January 9th is when I did my first board report. And I provided counseling to 158 students during that time. That was kind of what I called my summer, fall, and winter. And then as of January 10th to this date, I wrote this report last week and I had 91 students. As of today, I have 102, which is super common for when we come back from spring break, students tend to start coming in a little bit more. So I expect those numbers to jump even a little bit more in the next few weeks, and then I'll continue services for this year through June 30th. Counseling modalities that the students can join me with are face-to-face in office, which is my most popular. I do individual counseling, and then depending on the issues, I will do relationship, couples, or marriage counseling. Telemental health, I do a variety. So I do video-based counseling via Teams. I also do telephone counseling. I do something nowadays called phone check-ins, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. And I also do text-based counseling via email. And what that is, is a shared word document that we utilize for ongoing conversations, tracking issues, and that sort of thing. So just talking just a little bit about new modality for students, I try to really keep up and meet them where they're at. So last spring, I noticed, you know, an increased amount of students, and I really wanted to keep them more, you know, than every two to three weeks. And so I decided to try something new, and I call it phone check-ins. So my list of students who maybe were seeing me on a regular basis, who wanted to come more than like every other week, I said, okay, well, let's try this. So I do an hour where I have four to six students that sort of check in with me. I call them during that hour and give them five to 10 minutes. We talk about their goals, kind of see if they're on track with things. If they are, great, we're good till their next session. If not, then we know we've got to try to add something in before that. I've been doing that two to three times per week, four to six students per hour, and I've really been able to increase, not just being able to connect with the students, but it really offers them some increased engagement. Because if we go two to three weeks, sometimes we know that we fall off track. So that has really been something that's been working for students. So I've kept that up this whole school year. So what else works for students? We all know free counseling, and that's been really wonderful for our students. Another thing is easy, flexible counseling scheduling, which kind of runs into that next one, autonomous. So I schedule the sessions with the students. That way I know what my schedule looks like, and I can meet with them where they're at. They don't have to worry about a secretary or trying to figure out online scheduling. They email me or call me, we get that schedule. I do offer services starting at 6:00 a.m., and I will go up till 10:00 p.m. because I know a lot of students need to see me before or after work. Excuse me. That's especially popular over the summer, especially when some of our students are not necessarily taking full class load, or they're maybe at clinicals. Excuse me. The variety and combination of modalities has been really important, meaning, you know, if we're seeing each other face-to-face, how else might we need to stay in touch? So that's phone, maybe that's email. Bad weather, if you're sick, maybe we do a team. So having that ability to see me in a variety of different ways has been super helpful. I can address a lot of issues with them, and if I can't, I probably know somebody who can, because I've been in this community for a while. I love the fact that on our campus, we have a lot of other campus resources. All of them are free. So all of the different student services, we really work together to do what we kind of consider triage care. We really resource with each other, and then we also can resource with our community. So again, because I know a lot about our different resources and referral processes, that's really helpful for our students. Additional things that I do outside of just the one-on-one counseling. This year, I've been doing some presentations for what we've been calling Table Topics and Professional Development Committee, where just getting to talk about, you know, maybe what student service counseling looks like, or, you know, how we as a campus can support our students. I've been a member of the Student Support Work Group for strategic planning this year. That was new to me, and that's been an interesting process. I also do the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services for our Southeast Tech biennial report, so running some numbers to help keep those reports. Student consultation referral. This really refers mostly to if an instructor needs to talk to me about something, or oftentimes I will act as a liaison between the students or instructors. I also do a lot of referral for students who maybe leave me our campus or who need some services beyond what we can do for them. Instructor consultation, again, for student-related issues. And then twice a year, I do a student semester counseling report where I do report all my numbers. So common counseling topics. I kind of put this down into different categories. First and foremost, most of the students are coming to see me for personal issues related to whatever stressors are in their life. Some of those are related to student-school topics, of course. Lot more self-improvement. Mental health issues, meaning a little bit more severe, maybe diagnosed depression, anxiety, other diagnosable mental health issues. Addiction issues, because I can work with those. And medical issues, I put in a separate topic, in large part because, you know, health and wellness is important, but we do have a lot of sickness. We do have students who deal with ongoing chronic illness as well, and that's super stressful when you're a student. So again, we can kind of hit all those issues in my office. I do refer out to the community for several things. First, all of the students are asked on my personal counseling form that they fill out, if they are involved in any legal proceedings, because we do not work with those students, and we refer them out. You know, if they're court-mandated evals or counseling. Again, I can help them find the appropriate service in Sioux Falls, but I don't work with them. Counseling outside of the state of South Dakota, this is something I just make sure everyone's aware of. I'm only licensed in this state. It rarely becomes an issue, but if we do have online students who are in another state and they need ongoing counseling, I will help them find it in their state. If we have students who are in our clinicals and they've gone to another state and I've been working with them, and they need to just kind of touch base with me a couple of times, that's fine. We do that via Teams, we do that via phone or email. But if they decide they need ongoing serious counseling during clinicals, I do have to find them a service in their state. Financial or debt-related issues, that's a big topic for a lot of students. I refer to Lutheran Social Services for that, because they have a lot of really good services. Options counseling, of course, I'll talk with unexpected or unwanted pregnancy issues, but if they're really looking for options counseling, I refer out. I refer to the Compass Counseling Center for all things rape, sexual assault, sexual violence, domestic assault. That's what they do best. Dual diagnosis. So that means, do I have a psychiatric diagnosis and/or medical together? And oftentimes, I might be doing the counseling piece of that, but if they need medical or medication, then obviously we're working with somebody in the community. Areas outside of my expertise or scope of practice, more often this falls into, does this person need long-term care? And if so, when they're starting to get to the end of their educational component, we'll look for getting them referred into the community so we have that continuum of care. And the last one, of course, when they leave, I have to refer them out. Highlights for this year. So every year, I kind of see a trend in topics. This year, no difference in the last couple of years. Anxiety has probably been the biggest thing that students are seeing before. And this isn't diagnosed anxiety. This is just what goes along with our day-to-day stressors. This has been leading to a lot of social anxiety. Social skills deficits are a big one. I kind of call that my social skills 101, where we're just kind of teaching the basics. We also, it's been leading to a lot of depressive symptoms or straight-up depression. Big one this year, this school year, there's really been a lot of financial stressors for our students related to just the world as it is. A lot of food insecurities this year, so I've been having to find resources to help not only campus apartment students, but also those who live in the community, housing difficulties. And I forgot to put this on there, but daycare issues, there's no daycare available in Sioux Falls, and that's a real stressor for our students. And then transportation issues. So those are the things that have kind of been bigger deals this year that maybe I haven't seen in the past couple of years. And the last one also, too, we've really had an increase this year in South Dakota itself for transmission of STDs and different sexual assaults. And so there's been a lot more referrals over the Compass Center. That's my highlights for this year. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I'm amazed you can do all this. It's just amazing what you're doing, and such a help for our students, because we know they need these supports as well to be successful students. So I appreciate all that you do to help the students be successful.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I look at the range of things that you're able to help them with, and, you know, just as like we have numerous majors out there. We have lots of people from different walks of life who have a variety of needs. And so knowing that they don't have to get shuffled around from person to person, but that they can come to one person, I think, is very helpful as well. And I love that you are open to the different modalities, because I feel like as technology changes and as our generations change, people are just, have a different level of comfort with that. And so, like you said, meeting them where they are is so important. It's hard for people to open up to a counselor to begin with, so if you can remove some of those barriers of even having the meeting, you can get to the real work that you do by removing those. So thank you for your services. I know in Sioux Falls in general, mental health options are much needed, but not well available, just because people have wait lists for forever. So it's so awesome that our students can just get that help right on campus and not have to be referred out and wait months to see somebody.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. You have, given the part-time and full-time students at the college, do you feel like you have enough resource in yourself to see all the students? Or do you see any need for growth in your area? What do you think the demand versus your time, and what does that look like? So this year is sort of, I'm gathering information for that kind of, because this is the first year I've been technically in office of one. And so I have more hours than I've had before. So far, so good. You know, I'm able to juggle the schedule and the student needs so far. It's just something we've been talking about even in strategic planning on how it's going to look. Yeah, so right now, so far, so good, but we'll see how that goes with, you know, over the course of this calendar year to kind of see what those needs look like. If you were to name two growth areas, what would, you know, of your time and where you could have more resources, what would those be? You know, I think this again is something we talked about at our strategic planning meeting, too, is having somebody who's more like coaching in terms of not everything is, you know, necessarily has to be in counseling. Sometimes we just need to sit down and talk for an hour or two and just kind of get some guidance in an area. And then that person doesn't have to be licensed to do that, but maybe they're just a step down from counseling. I think that's a really, it's kind of a viable service, because that type of person can be used across different resources on a campus. And the other one is, you know, I really have to, especially stress for new employees out at the school, that we're not a crisis counseling center. And so the growth area for us as a community campus is we have to make sure all of us who work there understand 211, the crisis hotlines, because that's, we're not that. And so I think that's a growth area of learning for us, is how to refer our students to crisis. Yeah, we talked about that absolutely, and we talked too about the need for that financial. That's huge. Coaching, that sometimes it comes down to something like that, and just have, plug them in like you need to. So. We're really lucky to have LSS that we can refer out for that, but certainly having somebody on campus who kind of has some of that knowledge, I think, right now.
See, now, other questions? Do I have a motion to acknowledge the counseling services report?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Move on. Do I have a motive first, it looks like? Automotive technology, too?
Smoke crew. Good afternoon, President Mickelson and board members. I'm Terry Proudey.
You're done.
I like it. All right, how about that? We'll start here. I'm Terry Proudey, automotive instructor. I have been at Southeast Tech now for 12 years, two years as an automotive instructor, 10 years as an automotive lab specialist. So I've been in the automotive program the whole time. I'm also an alumni from Southeast Tech twice. I have a networking degree with the computer side, and then an automotive degree also through Southeast Tech. A little bit of background there. So the automotive program, we teach eight core classes in automotive, all the mechanical side, to make the vehicle go up and down the road and stop properly and all that stuff. So we're accredited with ASEF, which is an ASE accreditation, what the technicians would have in the field for their accreditation. They also have an education version of that, and that's what we're accredited through. So we have some guidelines to follow, in hours of which the students need to complete throughout the program to be able to have their associate's degree and part of their career planning, basically, and some of their paperwork they could have as they move forward. So there's three of us currently as automotive team, myself, Josh Garcia is one of the newest members, also an STI alum, and he has some military background and some other industry training. And then David Heald is another gentleman that comes with us with a lot of experience of owning a shop and helping the students out in the shop. Also, you'll see that I have some numbers up there of the program. You can kind of see some retention that has dropped off over a few years now. You know, some of that we call COVID, and some of the issues we've had. If you look at the current student retention and where we're at, we actually had 31 new students last year, and we're going to keep 28 of them for next year. So the retention's going back the other direction, which is fantastic. It also looks like graduate numbers will be coming up, and it also looks like job placement will be coming up. None of that stuff's finalized yet. The numbers are looking a lot more promising. We have some sign-ups here the next few days, and classes should be pretty close to be in full next year. So all the numbers overall look fantastic. Some of the things we do, just our programming objectives, technology, we use a lot of industry standards as far as scan tools and computerized equipment. We do a lot of diagnostics with the students, creating failures for them to work on, simulates things that they can actually physically drive vehicles up and down the street that have some issues. And different things that they can complete repairs, see what happens when the repairs are done. We also have communication projects where they physically contact customers, work on their vehicles, do the diagnosis, do the repairs. They do the estimates, all that type of stuff, so they get to do a little bit of that. As far as professionalism in our program, we require students to wear uniforms like they would in work, and of course, safety glasses and safety is a huge concern. So we grade them or assess them in attendance and how they act in the shop, if they're throwing things around or horseplay, that type of stuff. So we follow that pretty strictly. A lot of that all comes from industry with advisory committee and all of that. Just some quick shots of the class, of the shop, and the classroom. We've been out in the new building now for six years. So the big picture you see on the bottom left, if you can see that, that is just an overview standing from the mezzanine and looking across the shop of the new facility. On the bottom right would be our current classroom, can hold 40 students at a time when we're full. And then just another shot of students working on projects that we have. You'll see that it's fairly clean. We do follow a pretty close night, tight-knit shop, and then we make the students have processes, certain things they got to pick up at the end of the day and clean up, just as if they were in the industry. Any questions?
Thank you. I know sometimes I wish my car didn't have so much technology, because I can't figure out everything, and I'm sure that. But so is that the biggest expense, I'm sure, is getting the newest technology for you guys to use with your students?
Yeah, you think, you know, 15, 20 years ago, there was one or two computers on it. Now there's 20 or 30, so there's a lot of, we spend the whole semester just on electronics and getting them to understand how all that communicates to each other. Now, even when we get to breaks, a lot of that stuff's turned electronic, and so it's really kind of covered and encompassed the whole thing. So a lot of technology.
So you think there's an uptick because people can get new cars?
What's that?
Is there an uptick in the business? People can't get new cars and they're buying used cars?
Well, you know, with the prices the way they are, a lot of people are holding on to what they have, so there's a lot more repairs and there's a lot more need. There's, there's a big curve coming here of people that are older and ready to retire, and we don't have the people to replace them. Our phone rings every day looking for help, whether it's selling parts or working in a repair facility all the time.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to acknowledge that? Or should we just do all three at the same time? We'll do all three at the same time. Perfect. We'll move on to collision repair. Dana and Mike?
Good afternoon, President Mickelson, members of the board. My name is Jason Merritt, and I am the interim dean for trades. I'd like to introduce for acknowledgement the collision repair program. We have Dana Davis and Mike Wendell.
Thank you.
Some members of the board. I am Dana Davis. This is my colleague, Mike Wendell. And we are instructors for the collision repair and refinish program. So there's some numbers that we have with our current students and the status over the past several years. It's four semesters of coursework, four associate's degrees, 65 credits, including 15 gen ed. It's accredited by Automotive Service Excellence Foundation, so we do do training through them. We also do training involving Icar, which is collision-specific, collision-related. Faculty we have there, we actually, two instructors, Mike Wendell with 40-plus years of experience in the industry. I myself have 27 years of experience in the industry with some accreditations as well in non-structural and some estimating. And we have a lab specialist, Tracy Nielsen. He has over 40 years of experience in the collision industry. I myself have been at the school for just over three years, and Tracy has been there for probably about two and a half years. And like, it's 23 years in the program. So the way it looks now, we did have some items, I believe COVID did have an effect on things. We do have great job placements, and our retention rate is holding strong. The number of graduates, of course, we'd like to see more people interested in it. We've been working with the high schools, we've been working with CTE, bringing students in so that they can actually see what goes on. They can experience the lab and the surroundings, to kind of get them interested in that. So we've been doing that here lately to be able to kind of share what we have with any of those potential students. So. Our objectives for technologies to demonstrate proper equipment use and tool use, problem-solving, diagnose systems and components, and then determine the proper repair procedures. Cars are becoming a lot more sophisticated, so we're dealing with advanced safety systems, calibrations. That was something that's fairly new to the industry, but because cars are becoming so safety-oriented, we've been having to expand that. So we purchased some equipment for that, and we're showing students how to proper scan and calibrate cars, not just do the repairs and do the refinishing. So we're trying to be more well-rounded and more up-to-date. Communication is demonstrate communication relationships between each other and understanding procedures, being able to communicate needs that they have, terminology, those kinds of things. Then professionalism, effective use of time management, and how they hold themselves and present themselves and work and then meet the expectations of people. There's some shots of our labs. So the refinish lab has three paint booths and several prep decks plus room for prepping. So it's, has capacity for 30 students. The collision repair lab, we have three frame machines, three lifts, and then multiple body stalls, as well as an aluminum repair room to be able to handle all that we're able to teach students in our program. Any questions?
I'm curious. Obviously, there's probably vehicles that you own or that the school has, no? So who do you, where do your projects come from? Like, how do you?
Our staff?
I just gave a tour on this today, and they asked me the same question. You know, we have 2,400 students on campus who take classes there, another 100-plus employees. We put out an email twice a year, once at the beginning of semester.
Sure.
Once at the start of the second semester. When I send that email out, by the end of that week, I have 100 replies just from there.
Sure. You don't run out of work?
No.
No.
And then it's word of mouth after that, your neighbor and stuff, but most of it comes from on-campus.
Awesome. Great.
Can that email be sent to school board members?
Especially the ones with high school students, right?
A lot of those.
That's awesome. I mean, that's like an undocumented benefit of going to school or working.
Because we don't charge a whole lot of labor, we charge materials.
Sure.
So it's about half the price that would be taking the bell. And for our students, that's the difference between getting it done and not doing it at all, for the most part.
Yeah, nice. And I like how you mentioned, you know, I like that we're working so much with CTE to get students interested. And I think as you look at the pictures of, that you guys just showed, and the same thing for the automotive technology, like if you can get students who are kind of those mechanical people in to that environment, you can just probably see their eyes wide. I mean, they don't imagine that when they get to go and work somewhere, that, or to go to school somewhere, that that's what they get to work in. And so I think a lot of that key is just getting them on campus for a tour.
Actually, next Wednesday, all three of the CTE programs, you know, the time slots, we're coming up to shadow all day long.
Awesome. Yeah, so I think anytime we can encourage things like that, and you're not going to get 100%, obviously, but you're going to get those people who maybe had a vision in their mind of what it might be like to go to school, to be in one of these positions. But when they actually set foot in the learning space, it's a different feeling for them.
See real cars.
Yes, exactly. They have real things, real equipment, real tools and everything, so that's exciting. And I think, as Mark mentioned, you know, as people hold on to their cars longer, as we just have more issues, there's going to be more opportunities for jobs and careers in this area, too, and no shortage of job placement options, so.
Given that you have 100% placement, job placement, what is the pay range for those students in this particular industry?
How many years of experience do you want?
Well, the students, so first year. If they go to two years and then.
They're going to start off probably the $18 an hour range.
Okay.
But if they're in a nice shop here in Sioux Falls, with three to five years' experience. But if they're in a nice shop here in Sioux Falls, with three to five years' experience, I've talked to a couple owners, they're making eighty thousand a year.
Okay.
Depends on how quick they catch on, of course, between three to five years, what the shop owners have been telling you.
That's a good comparison for those kids to know what the investment is of two years and then what happens for them when they get out. So I can imagine they go to school and work at the same time.
Yeah, I think almost, I think every one of our students has a part-time job and most of our industry working part-time.
Yeah, I just have one that's not placed yet. They're all first-year students. They all have jobs and they're all going to be working full-time, except for one this summer. So this class is already, not, can't say spoken for, but they're already industry.
So would it be fair to say that the student gets their certification, to your certification, after going through your program? Plus they've been working already two years, so they have two years under their belt. When they get out, do they make?
They're just not up to speed yet.
Okay, so they're still going to be hourly. Okay.
The volumes aren't there.
Yeah.
Seeing no other questions. Thank you very much, both of you. Appreciate it. We'll move on to the diesel technology academic.
Thank you. Yeah, diesel technology is the third in what we call the transportation area at Southeast Tech. In fact, all three of these programs do have a five-year, one-hundred percent placement. So I'd like to introduce Kevin Shotkosky, Adam Anderson, Jason Steinmetz, and Kevin will be presenting.
President Mickelson and the rest of the school board, I'm sorry?
Did you draw the shorts, Josh?
I'm, I've been there the longest. These other two fine gentlemen just started this year teaching, so they don't know all the tricks of the trade yet.
How long have you been?
I've been, this will be my sixth year at STC, but I've been teaching since ninety-five in other colleges, so, or tech schools. Anyway, this is the diesel program. We have lots of students in our program that keeps us busy. We could always use more, just like the other programs. Of course, we have four semesters of coursework, AAS degree is what the students will receive when they're done. Sixty-five credits and of course, the Jan Eds are in there. This is a commercial vehicle degree accredited by Asef again, or ASE Education Foundation for the commercial vehicles. We do not have, in the off-road, ag and construction, he's going to be working on getting that certified or accredited to through AED or the, what is that? The Equipment Manufacturers, Agriculture Equipment. And myself, I'm Kevin Shotkosky, fourteen years of experience in the industry. We have, I have the AOS degree, CDL and AS Master Tech for heavy-duty. Jason Steinmetz back there, he has twenty-four years of industry experience. He's a first-year instructor and he's got the AOS degree and a CDL. And of course, Adam Anderson, the last guy back there, he has thirteen years of industry experience. And again, he's a first-year instructor. He's got an AAS from STC and he also has a CDL. We noticed that we, as instructors, we got our CDLs, or I did a couple of years ago through the school, because we have to test drive the trucks and so forth and when we hit that public highway, we better be licensed. Our program there, we have forty-five students this year. We were, a couple of years ago, we upped to forty-eight. We seem to be building slowly a little bit of steam. We have, what is there? New diesel students are twenty-one and we had ag diesel students last year of six. So the ag program is building. Had a little tick there a couple of years ago, but it's coming back. Our retention rate is eighty-two percent and all of our students hold full-time or part-time jobs. We have a couple non-traditional students with families and they're working a forty-hour week after school and they also work Saturdays, bring that hours up. Program learning outcomes, a lot like the other programs, we operate tools in a safe manner. Technical skills, we really work on the electronics and the emissions. The industry is telling us that seventy percent of the warranty work in heavy-duty trucks and ag and construction are the after-treatment devices, as far as cleaning up the exhaust. We use diagnostic equipment, we pull codes, we set codes in the trucks, the students have to read the codes, follow trouble diagnostics and then find the area of the problem. Problem solving and critical thinking, they identify and diagnose electrical sensors and diagnostic codes, install and operate subsystems like PTOs, hydraulic cylinders, so on, anything that's added to that piece of equipment. And then we get into a lot of repair and troubleshooting of hydraulics. We do that in all semesters. Communication, we develop skills for communicating with customers, vendors and manufacturers to be successful technicians. I also, a lot of us will have the students do a presentation in front of the classroom on a particular subject and they have trouble presenting. They, they like to talk when they're in class discussing different things, but now when they're in front of the classroom, they, they can see the other side of the, of the classroom also. So they do enjoy it. Couple pictures of our shops. The diesel technology is broken into two different buildings. We got into the new building on the right-hand photo, that's up from the mezzanine, that's where the off-road and the second year over the road is at, the truck side. And then the left-hand photo is in the wood center. And that is the first-year teaching, which Jason does. We call that the core class. Diesel has a unique opportunity where there is a path the students can choose. They take the first-year course or the first two semesters with Jason and then they have to choose either, I call it on-road, over-the-road trucks or diesel technology or ag and construction emphasis. So they can choose, they're broken into two different groups. We have had several students over the past years, maybe a dozen or so that have taken both sides. They return for that third year to take those last two semesters. Any questions from the board?
I was just talking to the, I think he was the CEO at Poet and they've developed new diesel fuel that's like thin as water. And I didn't understand it, you probably do, but and he was talking about reducing pollution, increasing horsepower.
Yes, they call that biodiesel. They make it from soybean oil. And they, they mix it with, you can't burn it or you can't use it a hundred percent. You have to mix it with diesel fuel because in the cold weather, it gels up or it solidifies. But it does reduce a lot of the emissions. It helps that after-treatment systems immensely.
Does anybody put it in the winter time?
Yes, they do reduce the amount of biodiesel in the winter time. Like the state of Minnesota, they're mandated twenty percent during the summer, but they drop that to about five percent in the cold weather of biodiesel.
Well, I answered a question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your reports and I guess you guys are the newbies over in I was just writing down that, well Nicole, when she gave her report, she's been here eighteen years, Terry was here twelve and Mike is here twenty-three. Just wanted to thank you all for your long service to Southeast Tech. It really helps the college to have that historical perspective and welcome to the kind of new people too. So thank you very much.
Thank you, President.
Do you have a motion to acknowledge the auto technology, collision repair and refinish diesel? Thank you. In a second. A motion in a second. All those in, I wanted to get it all for the record. You, but I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Do you have a knowledge? Thank you very much. Move on to the new academic report.
Good afternoon, President Mickelson, members of the board. My name is Benjamin Valdez and Vice President for Academic Affairs at Southeast Tech. We're coming before you today to ask for approval to move forward with a new academic program. We're asking for approval of the proposed Associate of Applied Science and Medical Lab Technician Program. The Medical Lab Technician Program is a two-year associate's degree program that has been designed in conjunction with both Avera and Sanford Health. While this will be the fourth Medical Lab Technician Program in South Dakota, working with Avera and Sanford, they have stressed the importance of having this program at Southeast Tech because there is a very short supply of medical lab technicians. This last, two years ago, Avera had provided this data that over fifty percent of the medical lab technicians they hired were from out of state because there just was not enough sufficient medical lab technicians within South Dakota. The program is designed that students would be able to graduate with their associate's degree and receive certification as a medical lab technician. It would also be an accredited, dramatically accredited program as well. With the program being set in place, we are not going to require any additional funding for new equipment. It is part of the zeal building, build-out, so that is all incorporated within the money received from the state and the other sources, so it'll be new facilities there. We are looking forward to getting started with this program and we ask for your approval on the program. Any questions?
So, for an old associate's teacher, lab tech would be like analyzing samples more than just taking blood? They actually look at and they help doctors diagnose, those kinds of things?
The medical lab technician is, they're, they're going to be responsible doing a lot of phlebotomy work, so they will be working with patients drawing blood, gathering different samples and getting them prepared to be processed. A lot of times they do assist with the processing, but then it goes to a medical lab specialist for the actual diagnosis and final report, but they are involved heavily with that. I forgot to mention, we are working with the Board of Regents that this would have pathways on to a baccalaureate degree. Northern right now is getting ready to teach out their Bachelor's of Science and Medical Lab Technician Program because of enrollment. But what they want to do is a reverse enrollment where their students within their bioscience program would be able to come to Southeast Tech for a semester and obtain medical, medical lab technician training, so they have that as a subset of their program. So we're looking at different options to go ahead and provide enrollment and opportunities for students at Southeast Tech.
And this is going to be at the next meeting this week, right, at, up in front of the Board of Tech Ed?
Yes, it'll go before the Board of Technical Education tomorrow for final approval and then to Higher Learning Commission.
Seeing no other questions. Do I have a motion to accept the new academic program report?
So moved.
Second, I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto the academic technology installation.
President Mickelson, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to give you a quick update on our campus classroom technology updates. My name is Eric Van Lach and I'm the CIO at Southeast Tech. Earlier this year, we gave a little bit of an update. In the fall, we did, we went through and picked about six classrooms on campus, some of our larger spaces and then a couple of regular classrooms where we were piloting some of the classroom technology that we wanted to implement further across campus. And with that technology, we, we wanted to allow to enable our classrooms to be high flex delivery. That's kind of a buzzword right now, which means what we want to be able to do with those classrooms is use, we use Microsoft Teams on campus. It will allow you to use other WebEx, Zoom, other ones that are out there, but we focus on Microsoft Teams because it works well with what we have on campus. But what allows our instructors to do is to be able to teach a class traditionally in their classroom, but also be able to deliver that class to students if they want, they choose to possibly be remote that day. Not every class in our, on our campus fits this mode, but there's a lot of classes that are moving towards that. So it gives a lot of options for our students, meaning where they could come to campus, they could sit in the live lecture in their classroom. They could also say, you know, if they're between working or if they're in a class or they may only have one class on campus and they're commuting, they could, they could pop in via Teams and be in the live lecture. The technology will allow us to have them have live collaboration with the students that are in the classroom along with the faculty member, just like if they were sitting in the classroom. And then the, the third part of that would be, is with our online, completely online students that we've been, programs that we have now, a lot of that is voiced over PowerPoint that happens and that gets delivered out. They go through it and they progress through the class. But this will also allow them to do, the teachers will be able to, or the faculty will be able to record the, the live lectures with the collaboration with the students that are in there on campus and the ones that are, are there. So students can go back to it after the fact to be able to do that. So there's a lot of pathways. I think there's a lot of, you know, with the pandemic, that opened a lot of people's eyes on what, what can be there. I think a lot of this has been there for a while, but it's accelerated it with, with what's been there. And I think our students having those choices in a lot of our, a lot of our classes, a lot of our lecture-based classes is what they're wanting and it's going to give them flexibility to be able to do that. So with that, we did, like I said, we, we had some classrooms that we've been piloting this semester. Gotten some good feedback from our faculty. We are now ready to expand it even bigger on campus. We're looking at over half our classrooms, looking at about fifty this time around. What those classrooms will consist of, I'll just give you a quick rundown on it. There's going to be a teacher podium that's up front. We're going to remove the projector and screen that are in there. And then up front, there'll be an eighty-six inch flat-screen monitor, which will be a content base where the teacher will share their content too. Off to the side, there'll be another monitor, which will have our remote students on it, so their faces will be up on there if they're talking. They'll be able to see that. And in the back of the classroom, there'll be another content monitor or a competence monitor for the faculty member that will also show the contents back there. So that'll be the base of what most of our classrooms are, then, you know, based on the layouts, there could be additional monitors that are in there, which will be nice for our faculty where they can come in, they can launch their meeting, which is scheduled, but already be on the touchscreen that's there. They can schedule, they launch the Teams meeting, they can plug in their laptop, share their content. On the podium too, we've gotten the feedback that we'll have a, like a ten-inch tablet there with a pen, a PowerPoint, PDF, whatever, that will also be showing on there. They can write on that, on that tablet and then that will also show on the content screens that are there, but also for the people that are, that are showing out there. So it's kind of a lot of what a smartboard would do, but the cost, we don't have to incur the cost of putting a smartboard along with just being able to, to be able to do that. So it'll also have in-ceiling microphones and audio in the classroom. So wherever there's somebody, a student's talking, that camera will focus on them for, based off of where the sound is in the classroom. And then once the faculty member starts talking again, it will focus back on them. There'll be a camera in the front and in the back of the classroom. So it should be, should be a really good, you know, addition to our campus. We're in the process right now of ordering. We had to go out for RFP on it to, to meet the federal guidelines on it for purchasing. So through that, we're in the process of ordering it and hopefully to have most of this installed by August first. Working on a couple of local vendors here in town to be able to get that done. Along with that, we're also doing eight conference rooms on campus, expanding that out with the same technology. And then we've got some study rooms on campus. I think there's nine or ten of those where we're just going to do collaboration rooms where we're just mainly adding a screen in there where students already are studying or, or studying in groups, but we're going to be able to have them, if they need to plug in their laptop, they can share their content and do the same thing with that. So that's also included with, with the project that we have here. So it's progressing, just like with anything else. The, the challenge will obviously be getting equipment here in the timely manner and then getting it installed. So any questions on where we're at with our technology?
So are you able to record all of that too when those are in the classroom?
The classroom ones you can. For the conference rooms, you'll be able to do that. In the collaboration rooms, which is just a study room, that's just more of a content screen that's up there. Those are, you know, three or four people that are in those. We have a few of those in our hub building. There's a couple of those in our health science building and then there's a handful in our Mickelson building.
What's the cost for classroom approximately?
For the base, they're roughly around, it's about thirty-four thousand dollars to be able to do that. The cost, a lot of it is in the, in the processing, the processors that are in there. Each one of those classrooms will, like I said, with the podium, all the equipment will be housed in the podium. There'll be a small computer that's housed in there that runs the touchscreen monitor. And then that's all integrated with our Outlook or our email system, so where you can schedule. So if a faculty member had a class in, let's say Mickelson two thirteen, that's, I'm just picking a classroom, they can schedule that all the way out through their semester. They walk in fifteen minutes before their classroom. It's automatically there. It shows the class that's there. They launch it. the class that's there, they launch it and automatically launches it for them. So there's quite a bit of integration that we're trying to do to make it ease for our faculty members and the other big part of it is we're, we want, what we're really stressing with our vendors and then what we, we will call out on it and what's going to happen is that no matter what classroom or conference room you go into, the interface that you walk into it will always be the same. So for training purposes, those types of things, we're also working on a classroom in the Technology Center where we can, that we're outfit in the same exact way that we can use for classes, but we're also going to use it for, for training and learning. So we can have instructors and other people come in there to get trained to be able to run this. So some concerns that we had is that, you know, just because I'm teaching in this classroom, do we, do we have to be, do we have to be delivering that classroom in a high flex way? And it's no, it's no different than what we have now where an instructor goes in and plugs in their laptop and it goes on the projection screen where it's at. Same thing with this, you can project, you just connect, you can connect in, you don't have to start a Teams meeting or a Zoom or whatever it is, you can just teach in the regular classroom, it's just going to have updated technology in it. So it's going to serve two purposes and what, what the nice thing will be is we're trying to build it out, so as this continues to grow, we're going to be ready to go with it.
Did you say thirty-four or three to four thousand?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Yeah.
Because I was just thinking, I'm like, this would be fantastic at the high school level, but probably unrealistic. I think Todd Beek would have a heart attack if I asked him about it.
We're probably talking the, the three monitors for the three to four thousand, so.
Yep.
I think it's awesome and I think, we talked earlier about there being daycare issues and so for maybe a, a student who has a sick child that they have to stay home with, it allows them to still participate on campus or, I mean, as we sit here and listen to the wind blowing outside, you know, we think about our weather here in South Dakota and we do have commuters and so maybe there's a weather issue and they don't safely feel like they can get to campus, they still have an option to participate and, and be engaged in their learning. So I think it's awesome as the variety of students that we have changes, that we have yet another way to meet their needs of having good attendance and participation in class.
And you look at our campus, it's, there's, you know, we have a handful, I mean, quite a few students that are on campus, but a lot of them are commuting, you know, and if it's either Sioux Falls or Brookings or wherever they're coming from, you know, there's, there's days where they may, you know, they may have to come to campus because lab, I mean, that's never, you're never going to replace hands-on lab, but there's, there may be also days where they have one or two classes that are just lecture-based that will, that's, I mean, could they, if they have the option to be able to just come in remotely on that and not have to commute to campus or if they're between work or whatever it is, it's just another, another option for those students. And I just feel that, I think, you know, there's not a lot of higher ed in the area doing this and I think we're, we're, we're coming up, but I think we're kind of leading the way on it and I think, I think as, from a recruiting standpoint and from, for students, I think it'll be a big positive for the campus.
Any other questions? Seeing then, do I have a motion to acknowledge the academic technology installation report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Thank you. On to the FY twenty-three budget guidelines.
President Mickelson, members of the board, I see my records intact, empty in the room. So appreciate that, a little disappointed in the auto guys, but we'll, we'll work on that. Additionally, Eric threw down the gauntlet this morning about who would take less time to present. Nine minutes, nine minutes and twenty-eight seconds and I know you have a meeting at five, so I win. So I will be last, but probably about nine minutes, twenty-three seconds. You have before you the budget, executive summary related to the budget goals, timelines and objectives. Again, HLC requires us to have a participatory process, so we're looking at a lot of different stakeholders coming forward with it. It focuses us to tie our budgets to missions and goals. Bob and Benjamin were both at HLC this past week and another thing that's come out of it, which a couple of you participated in, is tying our budget to our strategic plan. So while that is a work in progress, it's starting to coalesce and starting to take shape. So you'll start to see some connectivity in that. So, so that's there before you. The guidelines that we're going to specifically follow and actually the first one talks about how allocating resource consistent with our goals and objectives and strategic plan. So that is there as well. But I think one of the things that's going to come up is we get into kind of that overview that I do into the budget and we start looking at the resources that are available heading into this next fiscal year. As we're having discussions about how to allocate those resources with that strategic plan, one of the suggestions I talked about was, let's look at this in kind of a four-sector matrix, so we're looking at what are low-cost, high-impact, high-cost, high-impact, low-cost, low-impact, those kinds of different situations and think about it in quadrants. So given our resources, I don't know what we're going to have available to address high-cost types of things. We certainly want to grab those high-impact types of stuff, probably stay out of that quadrant that's low, low-impact, certainly high-cost, low-impact, that we'll stay away from it. But the other thing that we do when we go into the budget cycle, approach is always taken is there's those things that you have to do, the things that you should do and the things that you want to do. So those blend and meld into our conversation with our strategic plan. We heard a lot about, even in the discussion for you two that were there, you heard a lot about could's and should's. That blends perfectly with what we're trying to do as we prioritize those resources. So one of the things that's going to happen as we get in there and start looking at this is, I would always make an argument that everything we do right now is a half. We have to do this because we're already doing it. There's a constituency tied to that. But as we go through that and as the strategic plan looks to guide and shape that, there may have to be some decisions where we're going to move resources out of something we have been doing into something we want to start doing or something that the strategic plan has identified as a higher priority. Now, the ultimate goal as a finance guy is you hope the dollars that you put into it, you're getting those back out or more, you're getting a return on your investment. So that's kind of the overall framework or the mindset as we go into this next budget cycle. Now, when we get to the soup and nuts of it, we get to the real dollars, this is where it's going to be a little bit of a challenge for us. Had a lot of positive things come out of the legislature this year. So when you look on our revenue side, you all experienced on K-12 level that PSA increase of six percent, we did as well. Our allocation's a little bit different because it's tied to the system as a whole. So while the PSA went up six percent, we're not necessarily going to see a six percent increase in that state appropriation. The upshot to it is we're not going to see a decline either. So my early prediction's a small increase. We'll see how it goes because it depends on the enrollment of the other tax, but it should only go up, so it should improve it once we kind of get into the fall term. Obviously, we got the support for the ZIL building, build-out, so you'll see quite a bit more in state support when we get to that summary on our budget, you'll see that come forward. There was a last-minute appropriation related to a six percent increase for all Technical Institute employees. The trade-off to accepting that state money, which is going to become forever dollars, so it was kind of a thing that you wanted to accept and take was, we agreed to freeze our tuition fees, so both at the state level and the local level. So when we come in, you will not be seeing us propose a local-level fee increase, that's part of what we agree to. Another improvement in the state funding source comes with how the allocation formula for the instructor salary support or HB eleven eighty-two, you've heard me refer to. That formula has changed through rule-making, we're going to see some additional resources coming from that. So it's finally, after a few years, starting to balance the playing field and what we see for that. So that's helping us this year as well. On another point of coming in on revenue, you'll see our local sources jump quite a bit and you're aware of the generous gift of both the healthcare systems that are making towards that simulation or the ZIL building build-out. So you'll see a lot of those types of things. On our tuition fees, my modeling of late has always been to look at where we're at, kind of finishing this year, projecting from that, so we're not going to see a lot of growth in tuition and fees just from the increased enrollments and actually will probably reflect a slight decline. Early ARs, we've only had one, two, two-point-seven percent up, not ready to carry that into the fall quite yet. When we get into the expenditure side of it, talked about the capital, so you'll see some big increases on the capital equipment side. Obviously, with four and a half million coming in from the state, there's going to be a line item offsetting that. You see a big uptick in the capital improvements as well as we come in off of that because of the build-out. You'll see some salary increases, obviously because of the six percent. There's been some benefit costs, health insurance, dental insurance is going up and then the related benefit costs associated with the salary increases. There's also some new positions presented in there. We're going to have to see how they come out, we're going to have to see how they survive and where they fit into it. Within the operating categories, below the salaries and benefits, above the capital stuff, we're going to try to make that a zero-sum game in there. There's not a lot of resources to go to, but we do have some inflationary pressures. Natural gas is the first one that comes to mind, significant increase, we're projecting for that. See it a little bit in our property insurance, but we think we can offset that in some other areas. We've also got a couple of things in the work relating to federal grants that we've applied for, tie-in with the health, with the Simulation Center, there are EDA grants and I won't say the Department of Rights, Economic Development Administration, I think is what it is. Those will probably come in, we probably won't get notification if we are awarded those grants until after the final adoption in July, so we'll come back with a supplement. But those will again be revenue and expenditure as we go for it. So that's kind of the trailer into what's going to be coming in the next month and what you'll see when we request that tentative adoption, following that, we'll meet with the council. That seemed to work better last year when we did the tentative here and we did the council meeting right before we did the final adoption, they were seeing a more finished product than what they said if we tried to do it before the tentative. So we've adjusted to schedule and before that. Got my time, yes, just about.
Any questions for Rich? And I liked, I saw that you guys moved that date to the July eleventh since the week before is Fourth of July, so it's good. Seeing then, do I have a motion to accept the budget guidelines, timelines and calendar?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, moved.
Okay.
And motion second, all those in favor adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We're adjourned.
Yeah.
School board meeting to order, I have a motion to move into executive session.
You said, you had no.
Second, I have a motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Oh, yeah? Okay.